So, welcome to this evening's forum of the Town of East Greenwich, School Committee and Town Council Candidates. I'm Chuck Hinman. I host the morning edition on the Publics Radio formerly known as Rhode Island Public Radio. That's a story for another day. I am honored to moderate this evening's forum and I'm happy to see so many of you come out tonight to be part of this exercise in democracy. This is the third and final Candidates Forum presented by East Greenwich Chamber of Commerce and East Greenwich News for the 2018 election. New England Institute of Technology graciously hosted the earlier forums and in anticipation of a larger turnout tonight, we shift into our high school auditorium for this one. We're pleased to announce that the East Greenwich Rotary Club is helping to sponsor tonight's forum. And a note on Rotary Club tradition, they'll put on an Election Day breakfast honoring the East Greenwich first responders. And their breakfast is Tuesday, November 6th from 6:30 till 9:00 a.m. at St. Luke's Parish House. Tickets are $6. The breakfast is complimentary for E.G., police, firefighters, and their spouses. And you can pick up an Election Day breakfast flyer just outside the auditorium. You'll also have another opportunity to hear from the candidates. That will be presented by members of the East Greenwich High School Civic Action Club on Wednesday, October 24th at 6:30 p.m. at St. Luke's Church. Tonight, New England Institute of Technology student Lucas Nannastopoulos will be videotaping the proceedings. They will be available via East Greenwich News for future viewing. The forums are also being livestreamed. We're having a problem with the East Greenwich News Facebook page, so the East Greenwich Democratic Party Facebook page is livestreaming this event. And we may have that worked out by the time we get to the Town Council, we'll just have to see. A big thanks to the volunteers helping with the livestream, the AV, and the timekeeping tonight. We begin with the School Committee Candidates. Members of the East Greenwich Rotary Club previously picked names so that the order of opening and closing statements are predetermined and the candidates are seated in this order. Welcome, School Committee Candidates. Allison Powell, Jean Quinn, Anne Musella, and Lori McEwen. Candidate Susan Records was unable to attend this evening. The format for the School Committee Forum will be as follows. Each candidate will have up to two minutes to make an opening statement. And they have been asked ahead of time to include in this statement what they think is the most pressing issue facing our school district. Following this, each candidate will get two questions to answer and up to three opportunities to weigh in on the questions that are asked of other candidates. I will ask one question of each candidate, then circle back and ask a second question of each candidate. And we will keep track of the number of responses from each candidate, allowing up to two minutes for each response. We ask that candidates focus on the questions asked. Please refrain from revisiting the former topic, and if necessary, include that former topic in your closing statement. After this, if time permits, we have a lightning round that we can run. It includes up to three questions with very short answers. And candidates will be alerted that their time's up if they reach 20 seconds in that answer. To wrap up, candidates will be given up to two minutes for a closing statement. We revert back to the order previously picked by the Rotary Club for the closing statements. Tonight's forums are designed as a public service to benefit East Greenwich residents. The objectives are to allow candidates to express their views on issues facing our town and to allow the public to hear those views. So we ask that the audience give the candidates and fellow audience members the quiet and respect in fulfilling these objectives. Remember, this is not a contest. No prizes will be awarded tonight. That all happens on Election Day, November 6th. Tonight is for listening. For the candidates, our timers are sitting right there in the front row in front of you. And we'll hold up a sign indicating when 30 seconds remains of your time, then when your time is up, and if or when you have reached your three-response limit. Just please try to keep an eye for their cues and respect your time limits. We ask during the forum if anyone needs to leave for any reason, that you close the doors quietly behind you and try not to speak too loudly in the hall. So, all that out of the way, let's begin. We'll start opening statements with Allison Powell.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Good morning. Oh, yes. Yes. I like to answer. Good evening, everyone. Thank you to our hosts and for all of you for being here tonight. Oh, sorry. I'm Allison Powell, and I'm a first-time candidate seeking to serve on the School Committee. I was born in Rhode Island, and I'm a graduate of Duke and the University of Pennsylvania Law and Medical Schools. My husband and I returned back to Rhode Island to be close to family. And we have two daughters, Amelia and Eleanor, who are right now at Meadowworth Farms. Over the past several months, I've met so many people in East Greenwich, and I've spoken with hundreds and hundreds of residents. And the most common phrase that I hear, I'm sure no one would be surprised, is "We moved here for the schools." So, even people without school-aged kids here believe that strong schools equal a strong community. But most are concerned about funding for our district, and with good reason. The recent audit that was commissioned by the School Committee makes it very plain at the structural deficit that we're operating under. And it has hinted stark relief at the challenges that we face as a district. But we're also a community of tremendous resources. And I believe that working together, we can recommit to being a fully funded, exceptional school district of the future. A district with the resources to provide all of our students with the equal opportunities to reach their maximum potential. A district of big ideas poised to be a leader in innovative education in the state and the region. And I know some people have described this vision as offering rainbows and uniforms, but I promise you that I am a realist. I'm an optimistic realist, but I am a realist. My mother's a nationally recognized public school teacher who just retired from the war with public school system. And through my many discussions with her and my involvement in the community over the last four years, I understand the need to balance the concerns of our community in administering this district. So, I'm just giving my time up, so I'll just close the same. I'll listen to members of the community to champion new ideas that allow us to grow and become that district of the future I know we can be. Thank you. (Applause).
Can we please not have any applause until this is all over? Thank you. Next up, we have Jean Quinn, opening statement.
Hello. I'd like to thank the sponsoring organizations and the moderator and the volunteers here tonight for giving us this chance to present our ideas and feelings about what's to be done or what needs to be done. So, Nora Schiller and I have lived in East Greenwich for 42 years. When we moved here, everybody told us that it's a really well-run town. The schools are great. And for as long as we've lived here, that's been true. And over the time that we've been here, I figured out a few days ago that I'd probably paid at least $300,000 in property taxes in the time that we've been here. And I consider it a good investment. And therefore, I'm very proud of the community we've built, or very proud of the schools we have, and I think they're absolutely essential to a community like this. But I also feel like they're under attack, basically. The biggest problem facing them right now is the lack of financial support from Town Council. And of course, that's evident from the fact that we're considering legal action to remedy that. But I feel, you know, I have not been involved very much with town politics. And it was just last year that when the Mailer came out that it was full of misinformation, I just decided to bring any of this up to me and do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we'll hear from Anne Musella.
I'm Anne Musella. Elizabeth Anne Musella, as my name will appear on the ballot. I echo my thanks to all of those who've made this forum possible. And thank those of you who are not in attendance personally, but who are interested enough to watch remotely or after the fact. I have school-aged children, and I've done the same. And so I appreciate the use of technology available as possible to extend our community's engagement. My family and I moved to East Greenwich from Brooklyn four years ago. I am an employment attorney by profession. I've been doing it part-time since we got here. My children are currently in the ninth and third grades, which means that in the four years that we've been here, my two children have collectively attended four of our six schools. Early on, I got very involved. About a year and a half or so in, there was a problem with my son's half-day kindergarten bus. I pursued it. I talked to the district, to the school, to the bus company. And it was very clear to me that the right hand didn't know what the left hand was doing. And so then later that fall, there were multiple initiatives affected by the school district. The collapse of three tiers to two, full-day kindergarten, and a change in start times. And as I had suspected, having served as sort of volunteer parent coordinator in my daughter's bus in New York, bus issues erupted. I got busy. I attended school committee meetings. Transportation Subcommittee was formed. I was a driving force. We found multiple deficiencies in walking distances, opt-outs, looking at the wrapping systems. And as a result, the district is spending approximately $600,000 less over the course of a three-year bus project than it would otherwise have had it not been through our efforts. We must be fiscally responsible. Thank you. And in order to make sure that we can spend the funds wisely, that the programmatic audit revealed that we so desperately need, I think I can help. Thank you.
Thank you. Now Lori McEwen, opening statement.
Thank you. Thank you, Chuck. Thank you, Anne. Elizabeth McNamara, the Rotary Club, all the volunteers here. Thank you all for coming out tonight, for watching at home. And thank you so much for all of the people who come to so many of our School Committee meetings to show your dedication to your children, our community, and to making our schools better. I'm Lori McEwen. I am an incumbent. I've been on the School Committee for two years. I ran two years ago to fill a seat that had been vacated when David Osborne left to move to Virginia with his family. I am the mother of two children. My husband and I moved here in 2008 from Lexington, Massachusetts. My husband is a native Rhode Islander. Our son Michael is a senior, and our daughter Tierney, she wouldn't forgive me for that, our daughter Tierney is a junior. And so they've been in these schools for 10 years. And it's been a very good journey. But I joined School Committee, and I ran, and was honored to be selected and elected to fill the seat that David vacated because education is my life. For those of you who don't know, I do nothing but eat, sleep, breathe, education. My degrees are in education. I have a PhD in Educational Administration from Boston College. I have been a teacher, building leader, district leader, and I'm currently an Assistant Superintendent in Massachusetts. So I thought, well, why not just add this to what I do at night as well? I joined and wanted to be part of School Committee because I think our most pressing need is a lack of a viable written curriculum. And so I ran on the premise of getting a Director of Teaching and Learning. We just recently filled that position. That is the foundation upon which all children will soar, upon which we will close gaps, and upon which our children who are exceeding will go to even greater heights. I'm thrilled that we were able to fill that position, and I look forward to doing so much more on this School Committee. I'd be honored to have your vote on whoever sits. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. Now we will move on to individual questions. We will alternate the starting order, so we will start with Jean Quinn for the first question in this round. Bob Samanski is helping out, a veteran educator. He will be pulling the questions out of my hat, so I'm trying to break the cycle of any kind of undue influence on what question we ask who. So here we go. I'd like to hear that. All right, Jean Quinn. How can we better utilize the resources available at New England Tech to expand our course offerings?
Well, I think that there are a lot of sort of career-oriented offerings at New England Tech. And if you look at the orientation of East Greenwich, one of the complaints you hear about our school system as it currently operates is that it's geared to the people that are basically, it's college people that are going to college. And there's not that much for people who are interested in other careers that might not require, you know, four-year college education. And we, a community our size, doesn't have the resources to implement all the diverse programs that exist like New England Tech can. So I think it's important to partner with them where we can to expand what we can for our students because not all students are really going to go into a four-year college.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to respond to this? You have up to three responses if you'd like to make one. Yes, Lori.
But I'm worried that I'll use up my free pretty quickly. Thank you for the question. New England Institute of Technology provides us with a wealth of resources in this community that I think we haven't yet taken advantage of. For those of you who don't know, however, we just became part of the Advanced Course Work Network. And that is a network of providers. Some are institutions of higher education, some are not, that provide opportunities for our students while they're in high school. In addition, New England Institute of Technology is not just a two-year institution. It offers four-year bachelor's degrees. It also offers master's degrees. And so what students can take advantage of through Advanced Course Network and maybe some dual enrollment that we can pursue with New England Institute of Technology are a number of internship and experiential-type experiences that may be missing in a traditional college prep environment. So I think we'd be wise to pursue as much as we can with our university.
Thank you. We'll go to our next question. And this will be for Anne Musella. How would you go about forging a more constructive relationship with the town?
Let's just cut to the chase, shall we? This has been hot. This has been the greatest area of contention. I've only lived here four years, but as I said, I've been very involved. As I've talked to people who have lived in this town a lot longer than I have, I have heard two recurring themes. One is we moved here for the schools. And two is our town has never been so polarized on partisan lines, political partisan lines. I've been an equal-opportunity critic, as I've said. When I first stumbled into the bus issue, I, you know, it was difficult to push along a new initiative, gather consensus through the Subcommittee. Even as a Subcommittee, we debated and argued and quite a bit in order to come up with a good solution because it was a huge initiative. I've also been critical of some of the numbers that the town has generated. I worked with Jean Quinn on some of the numbers in the brochure that Dr. Quinn mentioned in his opening statement. What I have done, and what I sought to do, and what I continue to do, is forge relationships with individuals who are residents, School Committee Candidates, members, Town Council Candidates, and current members, regardless of political party, who are intellectually honest, who believe in transparency, and who believe in doing what's best for our schools and for our district. I cannot stress this, and so I really thank you for the opportunity to address this question. Thanks.
Anyone else like to take that one? All right, we'll move on to question three. This is for Lori McEwen. Given the very tight budget, would you be willing to allocate funds to improve school safety and security at East Greenwich other schools?
Well, we'd be foolish not to. And this has been the hallmark of the past couple of years that I've been on School Committee. This idea of making what seem like unsatisfactory cuts, choosing between two goods. We have talked about cutting programs. We have pitted families and community members against one another which program gets cut, which teachers, which paraprofessionals, et cetera. And it has been an increasingly difficult time to work on School Committee given those constraints. There are funds that will come to us from the state for school safety, and so we'd be wise to capitalize on that. We are certainly hoping that we will, that will come if bond measure passes for school infrastructure. So hopefully, that will alleviate and earmark some of the funds for us so that we won't cut too deeply into any programs. But our first and most important duty is to keep your children safe, secure, so that they can be engaged in their learning so they have to, yes.
Thank you. And Anne, it looks like you want to make a response.
Thank you, I do. This is also crucial. It's really high on everyone's list of priorities. I think that it's important to understand, again, the programmatic audit reveal that we are deficient in the number of social workers, mental health care professionals. The recent study that was done, I want to get the name right, the Rhode Island Working Group for Gun Safety, had a series of school-related recommendations that included prohibition of concealed carry on school grounds. I agree with that. I'm a product of the Detroit public school system, and I've spent 28 years living in New York City. I'm not unaccustomed to being around schools in urban environments. I don't think there's a place for guns in schools except for from safety professionals, from our police department. I also think that we do need to explore better and earlier intervention, and I think that the programmatic audit supports this.
Okay, thank you. We now have our fourth question for our fourth candidate, Allison Powell. The school district has run a deficit for the past two years. How should your district make sure it has the money it needs to avoid a deficit going forward?
Not a loaded question. Since the School Committee is not the body that is charged with appropriating funds, I mean, the charge of the School Committee is incredibly overwhelming in care, control, and custody of the schools, and that's an enormous responsibility. But the one thing it's not really empowered to do is to appropriate the funds in order to do this. That's the job of the Town Council. And if you want to boil it down, it's their one main job when it comes to the schools. And they have failed in doing their job. Now, I give a lot of credit to the community, to members of the School Committee for having an ad hoc revenue committee that's come up with some fantastic ideas, expanding driver's education to the high school, to looking at renting out our fields, and so many different other initiatives they've looked into to raise funds. But what it comes down to is if we, as a community, want to have one of the best districts in the state, if not the best district, we need to decide what that looks like, then we need to look at what it costs, and then we all need to come together to agree to pay for that. Now, there are lots of ways. I know people will say, well, we can't just keep raising property taxes. And those people are right. Property taxes have sustained the services of this community for a long time, but costs make that unsustainable going forward. We need to look at property tax relief. We need to elect people who are going to be creative about building and expanding our tax base beyond property taxes. And we're going to need to keep working as a community to come up with creative ways to fund the programs that our children need to be successful in the future. It's as simple as that, really. If we're wanting, we have to pay for them. So we all need to come together and work on how.
All right, thank you, Allison. Anyone want to respond to that? Jean, we've got two minutes.
Thank you. So I'd just like to add that, you know, I've thought about what Allison brought up in terms of, you hear there's a great deal of noise about, you know, how fast taxes are rising and the fact that we can't afford more taxes, et cetera, et cetera. So I asked five economics professors. I explained our situation to them, and I asked, you know, what do you think about this? And all five of them referred me to a book called "The Cost Disease" by a famous economist named William Almott, who just died. And one of them, who has been in the field 40 years, said that he considers this the best work in economics that he's seen over the course of his career. And what Almott says is that costs for things that are not amenable to labor-saving productivity advances or technology tend to rise faster than things like the CPI, which is an average. So things like teacher salaries, firefighter salaries, things that are labor-intensive will always rise at a faster rate than inflation. And so I read the book three times, and chapter four is titled "We Can Afford It." So paradoxically, yes, costs are rising, and they are rising faster than inflation. But according to Almott, we can afford it. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the first round of questions. We have the second round starting now, and we'll move on to begin with Anne Musella. The School Committee is reassessing the district's field trip policy to ensure it is fair for all students. Do you think the district should only offer field trips it can pay for without asking parents to cover the cost?
Well, Dr. McEwen is on the Policy Committee, as a matter of fact, but I have this question. Actually, I'm aware of when the proposed changes to the field trip policy were first put on the table. That was, I think now, about two and a half years ago. And it sort of didn't go anywhere, sort of languished a bit, and then the issue arose again, I think last spring. I was dealing with the buses, and it was sort of done. And so then I dove into the field trip issues. I read the proposed changes. I read the BEP. I read our District Council, Matt Oliverio's advisory opinion on our current field trip policy and the proposed changes. I read the underlying authority cited in Attorney Oliverio's opinion. And I caught up on YouTube, on School Committee meetings, all of the discussion, and I also attended a Policy Committee meeting. It is clear to me, and I think this is supported, that legally, as a district, we are required to offer field trips to all. And we can't, as one of the advisors in the inside of that, we can't put families in a position of having to ask for the money. I think, however, that where there's been a disconnect or there's been points of contention is because this field trip policy has sort of languished for a couple of years. There's the impression given that School Committee wants to take away our field trips. That's not my understanding. I think that it's perhaps a matter of funding mechanics, and I further understand that the School Committee did vote to seek an advisory opinion from RIDE. Part of the specific advice sought is how we can fund it, how those funding mechanisms might work, whether it's through PTGs, thank you, or other. I don't think we need to take away field trips. I think that it's perhaps a matter of funding mechanics, and I further understand that the school committee did vote to seek an advisory opinion from RIDE. Part of the specific advice sought is how we can fund it, how those funding mechanisms might work, whether it's through PTGs, thank you, or other. I don't think we need to take away field trips, but I do think we need to look at the policies. Thank you.
Any response?
Just because I was mentioned, and I do sit on the policy subcommittee. Anna is right, there's been no discussion about taking away field trips en masse. The policy committee has worked for quite some time. My colleague, Matt Plaine, I think first brought this up, and I joined the policy subcommittee when I was elected. We have a fantastic policy subcommittee. There are members of the public who are here tonight to weigh in, and it's really been a matter of semantics and trying to wrap our brain around what is a field trip and what are the extenuations of what a field trip might be. Where we're, I think, all clear is that field trips that are related to the curriculum, directly related to the curriculum, can never be a pay-for-play. We don't say if it is vital that your child go to this farm to learn animal study, your child must send in $10 or $15 or $20 to go, and if he or she can't, others might pay for it. And we can get around that very easily. We can look at how much field trips would cost for a year. We can obviously ask parents to fundraise for that, but you can't make it a quid pro quo for the actual child. We're getting into sort of bigger conversations, though, about trips like the Washington DC field trip. One of the things we need to do as a district is lower that cost radically, and I've asked for the past couple of years for an understanding of why less than half of the class goes. And I want to be 100% sure, I think we all do on the school committee, and I think you all do, that there are not children who don't go on this because they cannot go. We do not want to create a system of haves and have-nots in this district. I am awaiting the RIDE advisory opinion and awaiting time to continue the work of the policy subcommittee where we've entertained so many points of view on this issue. What we've all agreed on in that subcommittee is we want to do what is absolutely right for all of our children. We want to keep robust programs, and we want to find fair and equitable ways to pay for those.
Another response, yes, Allison.
Well, I echo everything that Dr. McKeon and Ms. Nusella said. No, the school committee has never gotten said it's trying to take away field trips. But in the meetings that I've been a participant in, the fear from parents and other people in the audience is that if we make it so that parents and other families don't have to pay or can't pay a fee to go on field trips, that the budget will not be allocated in order to have field trips, and therefore, field trips will disappear. Because there's a fear that if there isn't the ability for families to say they will pay a fee, or for clubs to raise the money, or to be able to fundraise for these trips, that field trips will disappear because of a lack of funding. And I think that brings into belief a bigger problem in the district, which is that we've become very reliant on externalizing the costs of things that we, as a community, feel are very important, integral parts of our students' education, onto individual families, onto groups like the East Greenwich Education Foundation, onto parent-teacher groups to raise this money. But as far as I see it, if we, as a community, think there are certain things like field trips, like enrichment opportunities, that are necessary and vital to a well-rounded, free, and appropriate public education, then this is something that we then need to budget for overall, for every student, not something we should continue to externalize into individual people with children in schools. Thank you.
Okay, next question, and I believe it will go to Lori McKeon. The recent program audit of the school district pointed out some deficits in the area of special ed. There's a real achievement gap between students with IEPs and the rest of the student population. With money so short, how should the district deal with these issues?
Thank you. Any response to a question about gaps in student achievement takes far longer than two minutes total allowed, and so I don't want to be blip on this at all. When I ran two years ago, it was to ensure that we had a viable written curriculum and a director of teaching and learning who would make sure that we had them. We cannot differentiate for all students if we do not have a written curriculum. The written curriculum guides everything that we do for our students. So it is very difficult for us to look at the gaps in student achievement, which we can do, of course, we can analyze all of our park data, and then go back and say, "How can we make the curriculum more robust for each one of these students to ensure that they meet efficiency, that they meet benchmarks?" So we need that. Second of all, when we look at gaps, we have to also be talking about growth, and so it is more nuanced than gaps, although I do believe those gaps exist. Third, I think it's about time that we stop labeling students. It is important that we identify students with special needs, and we give them all the services that we can. However, we have students who receive individualized education plans who also meet and exceed the standard, and that's important to realize as well. So I just want to beware of lumping any group of students together. That said, I do think we have a very good and solid special education program. I've been very pleased with the director that Dr. Macario hired a year ago. I believe she works very closely with the Special Education Advisory Committee, and they are a dedicated group of families that keep pushing us on all of this. So again, a lot more to be said about how we meet the needs of all students, but it starts with a very clear curriculum. That's what our director of teaching and learning will do in conjunction with our director of student services.
All right, next question will go to Allison Powell. When the new Cole Middle School was built, there was a lot of talk about keeping up with regular maintenance on school buildings, yet when budget time comes around, capital maintenance line, maintenance line is usually among the first things to cut. How do we safeguard our facilities?
Well, making sure that we have safe facilities that are warm and dry, and that our exceptional learning environments for our students should be a top priority. This is mirrored in the fact that the governor and the treasurer are putting forth a very extensive new plan called Fix Our Schools, where they're trying to put a referendum to raise $2.2 billion for school infrastructure. It's hard when money is tight, but deferring maintenance only makes maintenance more expensive in the future. But East Greenwich has a fantastic opportunity, if this initiative is to pass through referendum, to receive about 20% more funding from the state to update our facilities, to build new facilities, and to work on some of these capital projects that have not been prioritized in the past. This new initiative allows for districts with shovel-ready programs that have plans to work on their buildings, to build new facilities, and we can receive extra percentages over what our normal state would need. So normally, East Greenwich, if we do an infrastructure project, can get about 35% of that project funded by the state. Under this new initiative, we can get up to 55% of any project we have funded. So while I do think that it has been a problem in the past, and some of our maintenance costs are now higher than they would otherwise have been, we have a wonderful maintenance staff here that's ready and willing, and can give us the projects that we need and how to prioritize them. And if we're ready to submit these when this initiative passes, and if all of us in East Greenwich support this initiative, then I think this will be a great opportunity to update a lot of those facilities, all of our facilities, not just Cole, but all of our schools, many of which are in significant need. Thank you.
Thank you. Last question in this round will go to Jane Quinn. What are your top three priorities for improving the schools?
Let's see, so if I were to look at, what would I say are the top three priorities? I think, I think one of them has already been brought up here, that we need a documented curriculum. It's unfortunate that it's taken so long to fill the position of a director of teaching and learning, but now that person's on board, I think that, you know, I'm confident that that will be addressed. I think the second thing that we need to improve is, so I'm a math professor, and, you know, one of the people that I've been critical of the various aspects of the mathematics program, and I again think that that will be addressed once the new curriculum is finalized. And I think the building maintenance is a real source point. I mean, we had a ceiling collapse in the older schools. I mean, we're just very lucky that no one was hurt, and that it could have been a very serious situation. So you can't simply defer maintenance forever. Sooner or later, you're spending more eventually than you would have spent to fix the problem in this. Thank you.
Any response?
Well, I think I still have two left, but that was the last question, so I've been compelled to use this one. Three priorities. Certainly, I echo, and this has been part of our platform, if you will, differentiated learning as a parent, and that extends throughout Janet into special ed. As a parent, I think my, I've been most disappointed coming into the system with the lack of differentiated learning in the elementary years. My own son tends to be a very good reader, and yet I'm told, "Oh, he's fine." I don't sense that there's encouragement or structure to encourage him to go to his full potential on the schools. In the same instance, if there is an issue with math, he's doing fine, even though there's one particular skill set that he might not be, might not be getting, but otherwise, he's fine. And now I understand, delving into this, that we do not have a comprehensive working district-wide, particularly at the elementary level. I understand that. I understand that our teachers are stretched very thin. So that's a high priority. Agree with the capital maintenance. I think technology is also a big priority, particularly just in district operations. I've sat through numerous meetings, whether it includes our district enrollment clerk, Dr. Macario, a lot of this is bus-related, a lot of district administrative people, and I can see opportunities to achieve efficiencies just in district operations through the use of technology. But district operations and our central office is stretched so thin that nobody has a chance to take a step back and say, "How can we do this differently?" Why is our enrollment officer faxing handwritten sheets to the bus company to tell them who gets a bus? So there are tremendous opportunities there. Thank you.
That was the last question. You can respond to it if you want, you still have a lot. Right.
I guess well, never one to leave two minutes on the table. So, you know, I would echo so much of what we said about our top priorities. We have a strategic vision for this district that really would put us in great stead. I want everyone to be clear, when I talk about curriculum, I am not talking about the written documents, although that is so important, and of course, I mean that we have to have them. I am meaning a framework of the essential learning standards for all of our students so that each one of our children can be deeply engaged every minute of every day. It is truly possible for us to abolish the phrase "East Greenwich," for any kid to say, "I need school." We have an engagement issue. Our Panorama data shows us that students at the high school are not deeply and fully engaged. They are not in love with their classes. They don't necessarily feel like there is somebody to whom they can turn, some adult in the building. A written curriculum sets the stage for that, and then it allows us to engage our students in deep learning. So for me, I see no reason why a district like East Greenwich that has excellent teachers, terrific administrators, wonderful caring parents, and sends terrific kids to school every day can be anything less than that. I'd like to see us raise our standards higher than being excellent in Rhode Island. We're a small state. We're a great and mighty state, but we are a small state. We can compare ourselves to our neighbors to the north, we can compare ourselves to international neighbors, we can look at new and innovative ways of making sure that all kids have the deep and rich experiences necessary to prepare all of them for college, career, and civic life. So my priorities are always going to be around that, but I've been so lucky to serve alongside a group of school committee members who exchange ideas in a civil way, who have the best interests of students at heart, and who allow us all to bring our best selves to the table every day. Thank you.
All right, we have time for the lightning round now, and we will start with Lori McKeon. We'll go right into everyone else, the same question. You've got up to 20 seconds to make your answers, but you can probably do it in far less than that. So here we are. First question, how do you feel about eliminating the February break, providing a four-day weekend instead, and having a one-week-long break after Christmas?
Theoretically, I'd be in favor of it. I've said that I'd be in favor of it, but we can't do that until we talk with our neighbors in other districts. We have lots of parents who are teachers in other districts. We can't leave any family sort of in the one-off situation, but I'd be in favor of it, especially because we lose so many days in February, we could think about a long weekend there, and it'd be innovative.
All right, Allison. Same question, if you want to read it again.
Same question. So echoing what Lori says, I would be in favor of any changes to the vacation policy that would make it easier for our students to stay more engaged in school more of the time, it makes it easier for families to take extended trips. I know for our family, it's difficult having two breaks so close to each other to be able to do anything meaningful at all. So seeing, as Lori said, as long as it works for everybody.
All right, Jane.
I pretty much agree with what's been said so far. I think it should be kind of a, if we can reach a consensus, that this is what we want to do, and there are good reasons for it. I mean, it's kind of like the late start policy. Basically, we, you know, there was a consensus reaching that, that research supports it, and it's beneficial, and that's the way to go. I am a firm believer in data-driven, evidence-driven contexts.
I agree with what everybody said. I just have, is time up yet? Listen, I tend to be in favor of shortening the February break. I think that it's a bit disruptive, I think that it comes too close to the December break. And that being said, I do think that we need to really heavily consider two things, our neighboring communities and other students who may not have a program.
All right, that's it. All right, we are going to do closing statements now. We will revert to our original order, which means Allison Powell will go first. You have two minutes to make your closing statement.
First, again, thank you all for coming, and thank you to all of my fellow candidates for everything that they've said, for everyone who submitted questions. I feel like even though this was short, it was a pretty detailed and robust discussion of so many issues that are so important to all of us. To just recap about myself, I believe in public education. I believe in the mission of public education, and I believe in East Greenwich having fully funded exceptional schools, both statewide and individually. I believe in equity and innovation, and that means differentiated learning, mastery learning, a growth mindset for our teachers, all of the things that will make our students, our kids, lifelong winners and solid citizens. And as far as being a local leader, I believe in transparency, and I believe in collaboration. So on the school committee, I hope to be an active voice for this effective and efficient growth. As a lawyer and a parent, I'm experienced at bringing people together in terms of all the kinds of tough challenges we've all been talking about tonight. And so whatever the outcome of the upcoming election, no matter who sits on this committee or on the town council, I'm going to advocate for the funding and for the programs that we need to prepare our children for in the future. My daughters are going to be in East Greenwich public schools for the next 13 years. I am just starting as a parent, as a community member here. So I have a vested personal interest in the future of our schools, and I have the passion and dedication. And I have the passion and dedication to help grow our district. We have a great opportunity here in East Greenwich. And as a school committee member, I hope to collaborate with all of you, with everyone on the committee, with the town council, to solve our problems with and eye toward the future we want for our children. And so I'm committed to working together to find nice solutions. I want this town to continue to be among one of the strongest in the state for generations to come. So I thank you all, and I humbly ask for your vote.
Thank you. Jane Quinn, your closing statement.
So I, you know, people I never knew paid for my public education and served on committees that ran the schools, the excellent schools that I went to. And I feel like it's my turn, it's not past my turn, it's the time that I stepped up and helped with that. And I would be thrilled to, and consider it an honor and a privilege to serve with the very few people, very highly qualified and committed people that have stepped up as well. I'm just one of the people on the school committee and the people who are running the school committee. So I hope to be able to join them. Thank you.
This is actually, despite all the sort of political turmoil that our town has endured, I think that this is actually a very exciting time for our school district. We have the results of the programmatic audit. We have a brand-new director of teaching and learning in place. Not that she's brand-new in the district, so we can take advantage of her institutional knowledge. But we have this position that's been created when our district has not had anything resembling an assistant superintendent for six or more years. We have a relatively new director of special services, Lisa Hughes. This is her second year. By all accounts, she's tremendous. I've met with her, I asked for 45 minutes of her time. She gave me almost an hour and 45 minutes. We have an incredible group of engaged, dedicated community members. We have some phenomenal teachers. We have excellent school administrators. The trick is, we have fiscal challenges. So how do we work together? How do we work with the new town council? There will be some changes, depending on how many, and there will be some. How do we work together? How do we restore the trust between the bodies? And how do we affect many new initiatives other than under our current financial constraints? I think that, again, I'm going to invoke the buses. I think that I've demonstrated that we can look at things creatively. We can look at things as a body. We don't have to, for instance, when I talk about district administration and the challenges for the cited enrollment clerk, there are ways to do it creatively where if we previously thought we needed an additional three head count, maybe we need 1.5. We can look at things creatively if we have the energy and the will. I've demonstrated that I can do that. I've demonstrated that I can work in census. And I'm really excited about the opportunities, although we've got a lot of work ahead of us. And I'm excited about the prospect of working with, I don't know, three out of four of us at least are going to be there, along with the school committee members whose terms are, whose terms are not up yet. So I would be honored and privileged if I could have your vote on the number six. Thank you.
Lori?
So in two minutes. Thank you all for being here tonight. I want to thank my fellow candidates for the conversation. You know, we were asked earlier about the relationship between the town and the school. And it's very difficult for any of us to form relationships when we sit like this with microphones. But I will say that it's been a privilege to be on this school committee. We have excellent folks on the school committee. And if I'm re-elected, I will miss people like Jan Sun, who asks such thoughtful questions, Mike Fain, who is a stickler for numbers and awfully funny as well, and Mary Ellen Winters, who has such historical knowledge of this district and such a care for children. It's been a pleasure to serve alongside them. I would welcome, of course, any of these folks new to return to the school committee along with Carolyn Mark and Matt Plane and Jeff Bronzak, who all work tirelessly, as I said, civilly with great respect, and we push one another's thinking constantly. It's been a privilege and an honor to be able to serve you for the past two years. I would ask for that privilege and honor again. I think I have talents and skills as an incumbent and as the only K-12 educator who is running or who would sit on the committee. I would love to continue to serve you in this way, to share my ideas for innovation, to work alongside this director of teaching and learning that we've brought in, to build a curriculum and an innovative school district that meets your needs and serves all of our children so that each of our children every day says, I love learning. I love being here. I am pushed to be my greatest self. Thank you.
Thanks to all of you. Applause.